We'll go ahead and get started if everybody stands for pledge allegiance and prayer, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, as we come to you tonight, I want to thank you for the opportunity for us to gather this evening, Lord. Lord, I ask you that you would be with all those in our community, Lord, that are sick and hurting, and we ask you that you would lay your hand on them and guide them in the direction that you would have them go, Lord. Lord, I ask you that you would be with us tonight during this meeting. I'd ask you that you would lead us in the direction that you would have us to go for our city. And amen and pray. Amen. Roll call. I am present, Alderman James.
Present.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Hinderleider.
Here.
Alderman Steelman.
Here.
City Administrator Walton.
Present.
City Clerk Cavill.
Present.
City Attorney Weber.
Present.
Public Works Director Nash.
Present.
Chief of Police Chase is not here this evening. Economic Development Director Burbidge.
Present.
And Utility Supervisor Cochran.
Present.
Wonderful. At this time, we have no hearing of persons. We'll go into bids. Mr. Parker's going to excuse himself due to the nature of the first bid being a conflict of interest. The first bid on the agenda is for Refuge and Recycling Services. Mr. Walton, could you introduce that bid, please?
We ran advertisements requesting bids for trash and with the recycling option, using similar terms as what we had first advertised three years ago when we were first considering recycling. We didn't specify the type of recycling, so parties responding to the bid could specify whether they were doing the single stream or commingled. And so we just asked them to specify that clearly on their bid response. And we had one response or request for bids, and that's what's included in your packet from WCA or current carrier. You have in your packet an option for just trash or trash and recycling, and with both the option of if they were to do the billing or if we continue to do the billing as we're currently doing. So it would... If we would want to keep the recycling option, you have that option with this bid. Or you could, if you wanted to drop to just the trash, you have what the rates would be for just that.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion at this time?
So I just want to point out, we've had some issues with the recycling and it being picked up. And I... Can I ask for some... Well, do I need to make a motion first before I go into that?
We're supposed to have a motion and a second, and then it opens for discussion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the bid, including recycling, for this session.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
One more second.
Okay. So can somebody speak as to... Yeah, how... Because I know that most people say they don't have any issue with their trash being picked up. It's only the recycling. And I know that, I think Grace called about it before, and I think all of us have had similar complaints from people. Can you speak on that at all, or how we can work to remedy those situations going forward?
It's good time because we have our office manager here with us that actually oversees the drivers' fuel there. Do the questions... Is it welcome to recycle? But recycle is every other week. Is that... Does that always create confusion sometimes?
Yeah, no. Most of the people that I talk to will even like... They'll say things like, they'll set it out every week just to be sure that they don't have their own dates wrong. And it like... There's sometimes, they say their recycling hasn't been picked up for a month, you know, so... Or some people say, you know, even longer than that, so...
I'm not aware of that being common unless it is something that's contaminated and the recycle man rejected it. Because the contamination in recycling is getting to such a huge, huge issue. The program's great, it's clean, it's really straightforward. What isn't is not acceptable. Then invariably someone will start putting some glass in, they'll start putting styrofoams across the bags in. Then contaminates the load, and then goes to a processor. Then he either starts surcharging us for processing it, or he rejects entire loads. So, other than that, I really don't have a specific answer for you. But if I had some examples, like a research, I could certainly find that.
Okay, so you're saying like, if they came up and looked inside the bin and they could clearly see that there was something in there that didn't belong, they just would leave it? Okay, okay. I think that might be, you know, I don't know, that might be the issue for some people, and they just don't realize that that's what's happening. They just assume nobody's coming.
And that could be, because and I can deal with... Work with Justin. We can start asking the driver to make this inception list. They turn around sheets every day when they get through.
Okay.
And we can review those, and we can itemize what addresses were classified as contaminated. And I'm not talking about just one little item or something.
Sure.
It's pretty awful.
Okay.
But specific things will just kill the load.
Okay.
And that's the first thing that comes to mind. That doesn't mean that's the answer. But I know from our side, we can get more information so we can isolate what those instances are by address.
Yeah, that would be great if we were to go forward with this, to have some communication on that end. So that way, if somebody does, you know, call and say, you know, their load wasn't picked up, that we at least have an answer for them. But also, if we could get a list too, so that, you know, if we need to reach out to them and say, this is why...
It's probably time for us to do another major residence, just like the original list. It hasn't changed. It's in the bid packet of what is and is not acceptable. But probably a good time to go ahead and send that out again, just as a refresh.
Yeah.
Like I said, the program is a...
Yeah.
Over and over, we usually have trades, and the city has really used the system. So we've got something that nothing picked up. There's a reason. I just cannot tell you what that is.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions, one for you and one for Jennifer. For you, is there a way that if the driver comes up with a can that's contaminated or that type of thing, is there a way to mark that in any way so that the homeowner knows that there's an issue as far as a reason why that it didn't get dumped?
Do we have any... And then motion stickers or anything that we could take on the...
I don't have any. We can do that.
We can do that, or just kind of a checklist, and he can mark off what is or is not accepted.
Because and I'm not looking at trying to delay time. I know time's definitely the essence, but, you know, it definitely would save us some calls and save you guys some calls too, because they're going to call us, and then we don't have a clue. You know, so then we're going to have to call you all, and so it may save some time in the long run.
Well, and communication is the biggest key. And our driver would like to have a clean journey, so he doesn't have to worry about that either. You know, whenever he dumps it, all of a sudden he hears all the bottles going in, he immediately says, oh no. And he can't get in doing that.
Sure.
But he knows that's a bad oops, because it gets embedded in the fibers, and it's just a real... You know, we can throw some better stickers that they could leave on that can. Why it was rejected without it being picked up. And frankly, the citizen then will build an extra mile to clear it out, you know, and remove it the next time.
That would be great.
And then Jennifer, what are you hearing on your side as far as in the office?
They're missing whole streets. It's not missing a house here or there. They're missing streets. I don't know what the issue with that is, but the other thing is if they can put a sticker on there, because most people just assume they didn't pick it up. They don't know that there's a reason why they're not picking it up. So if they can identify that, that would be great.
And Jennifer, missing whole streets of recycling or trash or recycling.
Recycling.
Follow-up lines, go on.
Thank you. Can you provide a general comment to the recycling business as a whole at this point? I know that the business I'm in, we... About a year and a half ago, we stopped being able to get rid of our product.
The products are still recyclable. It's just they are not as valuable as they used to be. When China pulled out, it just really bettered the street because the United States was depending on going to buy products. We're still moving products. But the processing fee is now higher than what it is for trash. So it is still viable. I think it will come back, but it's a long haul. And that's why the recycle costs moved it more than it used to because of the processing fees. But we still are moving products. So I think it was still be there. I don't think that it would die away, but it's kind of its ups and downs. You know, cardboard, you mentioned that. Cardboard used to be worth like a hundred dollars a ton.
Right.
Now it's down to like twenty-five, thirty-five dollars a ton. It costs more than that to bail it. So that's why it's getting tough. Sometimes, you know, we may have to subsidize it to make those products move, but it's a good program.
So you don't expect any, in this contract, any change in pricing because we have to pay to get rid of what we recycle?
No, no. We have done due diligence on how we stand and what we're doing now and how we're going to continue to do it.
Thank you.
Anything else we're here to answer?
Any other questions?
Or entirely to your motion. Is it city class?
Yeah, I was going to say, do we need to decide on who's class? I would just say it's city.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We'll call for the vote. Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider.
Yes.
Alderman James.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much. Mark, would you care to holler at Greg, please?
Yeah.
Would you make your motion to the city of the...
Well, do we... We want... Sure. That's what I said, but I didn't... I didn't raise that.
Next item on the agenda under bids is countertops and cabinets for the police department renovation. Mr. Walton, since Chief Chase is not here, would you like to...
Well, and I would ask that we postpone that till we have a representative of the department here that can answer questions and respond to any concerns.
Yeah, I make a motion to postpone.
Second.
Do we need to postpone individually? Mary, or can we...
Because there's drywall.
Yeah, there's three different bids plus equipment for police vehicles.
I think there was kind of, on the equipment for the police vehicles, I think there's kind of urgency on that. The other three, I don't see why you couldn't postpone on those, but the equipment for the police vehicles, I think there's an urgency.
Okay.
He will not order until they have an okay from us.
Okay. So do we need to postpone these individually since they're listed individually on the agenda?
Attorney Weber, do you see a problem with them postponing all those three altogether, or do you suggest they do them individually?
I'd just say do them individually. That would do us a clean record.
Okay. Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay. And you second that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Point of discussion, though, it seems like we don't have the entire package of the remodel inclusive of all the items that we discussed in the original budgeting discussion. And I'd also recommend a recommendation. We sort out the roof first before you put any drywall down.
Okay.
Put the drywall down, and the roof starts leaking or something.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is demo and hanging of drywall for the police station.
Make a motion to postpone.
Second. Your second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote. Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider.
Yes.
Next item is demo... I'm sorry, is network lines, phones, and fax lines.
I make a motion. Will you postpone?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Alderman James.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda under bids is equipment for police vehicles.
We had budgeted eighty thousand for two vehicles, and they came in enough under that for this would still put vehicles with the purchase price under the budgeted amount. So it'd be staff recommendation, go ahead and proceed with the equipment order to finish out the new police cars that have been ordered.
You know what the total would be with all the police, both equipment and both vehicles?
Was it thirty-six thousand? Mary, on the...
Do you remember what meeting we were in when we approved those bids for the cars?
It'd been the first meeting after the budget was...
Let's see, July sixth. Okay, they were sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the two of them together.
So that brings in like seventy-five, basically.
I make a motion. We accept the bid from Scenic Rivers Vehicle Outfitters.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, we have to call for a hearing for the change of floodplain control ordinance. We'll open up that hearing of persons at this time.
Mayor, would you like for me to kind of go over what's been changed?
If you would like to, that would be great.
I don't have everything, but it's basically to adopt the new mapping panels, which are these right here, and some elevation changes. And the code, basically everything else is the same, word for word. The old code in one spot said that they had to go to the planning and zoning. The new recommendation was it goes to the Board of Aldermen. So that's a change in section four fifteen, one sixty. There's some changes in there where it changed from the elevation points of one foot to two foot. One... On three A, or let me see. Three B. I think it's three A. It went from one square foot to one square inch for every square foot, and I think it went to two square inches for every square foot. It's just minimal. It looks like, I think, wherever it said it was one foot, it's raised the elevation to two feet. So I'm just... I knew what everything was, and we were supposed to meet on this before. Now I'm trying to rush to try to think what it was, but that's... I mean, I went in and typed all of this and changed the format that was sent to us from FEMA, FEMA worked to coordinate, we're numbering in the code, so...
If we don't do this, we will qualify for FEMA.
Mayor's been in touch with them, and it's, we're getting to the bottom line. This has to be...
Yeah. Yes, Todd.
Who decided to eliminate planning and zoning?
It was in the recommendation, sample ordinance from FEMA. And let me see where... Let me see if I can remember where that was.
Do we have any choice in that?
People are sleeping for the... For the adjustments. People are sleeping here.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, Mary was looking for that. I would like to add, you know, not just FEMA funds, but having adopted a current, up-to-date ordinance as well as adopting the map, those are also requirements for the certified site application, you know, for industrial property. So I have to see if I can figure that out.
Thank you.
I know it can also be very challenging for anyone trying to acquire a home mortgage, especially in this... I know Shannon County at one point did not... They did not adopt to... Because of that, you... I mean, National Bank, you would not be able to get a loan. Maybe a local bank could.
I think it also changes the floodplain administrator from the city engineer, which we had in our old code to the mayor, or his or her designated. That's one big thing.
So the last paragraph under amendments talks about there's been an opportunity for public input into this, but that would remain for amendments, so I don't even tell anybody or anybody who agrees with me. Either from offering suggestions for changes on this, I will forward.
It looks like it changed the board of... Establishment of the appeals board from the Board of Aldermen to the Board of Adjustments, planning and board of adjustments.
Greg, what section are you referring to?
Article seven. Article seven, right. So any changes would, you know, there'd be a public hearing and opportunity for public input.
I think that's one big thing. And then the change was changing the board of appeals instead of the Board of Aldermen to the Board of Adjustments. And the Board of Adjustments would... Passing applications for variances, it would go to the Board of Adjustments instead of going to the Board of Aldermen. It's in the old... Old. I can't find it. Just scanning real quick. Looks like a lot of stuff was taken on for the application and variances and stuff. And appeals goes to planning and zoning board of adjustments instead of the Board of Aldermen. That's the main one I can see. I can't find real quick where something was changed from planning and zoning to Board of Aldermen. Sorry.
But from what you're seeing, Ray, they're not... There wouldn't be anything where they would be excluded.
From offering comment on, you know, changes or they would have standing like anybody else?
Okay. Any other comment or questions on the floodplain control ordinance? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is going to be the consent agenda. Need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is going to be reports of city officials, boards, and committees. Mr. Walton, or...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Aldermen. Gina, can you still hear us okay?
Yeah, I can still hear you. Can you hear me?
Okay, I'll have some comments, and then I'll introduce you to the meeting. The Salem Community Center at the Armory reports two thousand eight hundred and fifty participants in their programs and events for the month of July. The utility bills for May consumption are in the process of being posted to our billing system, and afterwards, we'll proceed with processing the billing for June consumption. We'll hear more about that shortly. To assist customers that may have questions about their account, we're looking to expand our drive-up hours. That could include evening and weekends, and other options that will be shared with local media, posted online, and included in a letter going out to all utility customers. Bills will be included with the letters for new customers getting their first bills. Then, if there are questions, I'll welcome those now, or otherwise, I'd like to go ahead and introduce Gina Erickson with Tyler Technologies, the parent company of Incode, our utility billing company.
Good evening. I'm going to start my video, if that's okay? Does anybody have any questions to start out with?
Go ahead, Gina.
I don't believe so.
Okay, great. So, first off, thank you for inviting me to come along and join your meeting tonight, I really appreciate it. We've got a really good team of our support team and our interface specialist team that have been working with the city of Salem since about the beginning of June on some billing issues and some rate issues with the meter reading interface. I believe that there was some information out about an incompatibility with the Tyler software and the meters, and the compatibility, there's a, the meters that are placed, and then the billing software, which is the Incode software, there's an interface that goes between the two that maps the data, so the data that's in the meters gets brought into the Incode billing software, and when the meters started to be replaced, the interface itself was not replaced, and we have since done that. Ray did contact Incode and did purchase a meter reading interface update, because with the new meters, it did require a new interface, and we've been working really closely with Ray and his team, they've been very dedicated, very engaged in the project. There's a lot going on with the billing software and the updates and the corrections that needed to take place. I believe my notes show that when we were brought on board in June, the billing was up-to-date through January twenty-fourth, and Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, that billing went out in April, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and since then, we have completed February, March, April, and Ray and his team are in the process of going through some corrections for right now, and that would be missing reads, overlapping start dates, some abnormal consumptions, and we typically see that periodically in utility billing software, it's not something that is uncommon. We go through corrections, then we go to the billing portion of the, of the application. So right now, where we're at, Ray, the software is in Ray's hands, they're working on making some of these corrections for May. We can grab June consumption right now and be ready to bill to the business out of Incode software as soon as the May updates are done by Ray and his team. So our plan, what we're looking at, is we can get the updates for May done, hopefully here within the next day or so, I know Ray communicated with me this morning, he stayed in constant contact with the Incode team to continually get the system updated and the data cleaned up, but the plan will be to do July consumption, we can grab it at any point as well, and we recommend sending July consumption bills on the twenty-fifth of August. A lot of our clients will typically read around the first of the month and bill the middle of the month, but because your bills were previously read through the twenty-fifth of the month, we figured we would start July going through the twenty-fifth, then try to cut it back a little bit shorter so that we were sending consumption bills on the twentieth of September, and then September consumption bills out on the fifteenth of October, and then get it through team where we were doing reads the first of the month and billing on the fifteenth. That is the typical cycle for our utility billing clients, just all one of the month. Any questions so far?
So I might comment, we are working on a utility workshop with Gina and some of her team, but with also our local folks, including our committee and Aldermen, and to discuss, you know, the billing cycle that Gina mentioned. No decision's been made on what our billing cycle will be going forward, but we definitely want to, you know, hear from our, our software vendor, as well as from staff, their recommendation, and, and then provide the Aldermen and the utility committee a chance to, to, you know, talk through that and, and make a decision going forward that we think is, is best for us. But in the meantime, we're, we're working on getting those read files, you know, and, and the billing posted, and get back to, to live billing as quick, quickly as we can, while providing our customers opportunities that get their questions answered, or if there's concerns, address that. I might mention, Tyler's also provided access to some of their PR staff that help us with those messages, that, you know, we work through our local media, and so we appreciate that, and as we get that workshop firmed up, we'll get that posted, that will be a posted meeting open to the public, and as soon as we can get that finalized, we'll get that posted and, and with the agenda and so forth.
Target date's the eighteenth, correct?
Tentative date is the eighteenth, that's what we looked at, and we'll get the location nailed down and, and the time, and get that posted hopefully this week.
Jennifer, what kind of a timeframe? She had said that the ball is kind of in our court at this point. Do we have any ideas about what time, how long we're going to be before we're posting May's consumptions?
We're just finishing cleaning up some things, that's, we're making progress, we're close. If you need that made, we're really there.
Any other questions? Wonderful, thank you very much. Do you have anything else for your report, Ray?
No.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is introduction and a reading of bills and resolutions. Ms. Happel, could you please introduce bill number thirty-four fifty-one, please?
Mayor, due to the length and it being posted properly twenty-four hours in advance, would you care if I read it, my caption only, both times, please?
That would be fine.
Bill number thirty-four fifty-one, an ordinance repealing chapter four fifteen flood control adopted by ordinance number thirty-one thirty-seven, July twenty-first, two thousand eight, and replacing with ordinance number thirty-four fifty-one to be codified as chapter four fifteen flood control of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Salem, Missouri. Second reading, bill number thirty-four fifty-one, an ordinance reflecting chapter four fifteen flood control adopted by ordinance thirty-four fifty, thirty-one thirty-seven, July twenty-first, two thousand eight, replacing with ordinance number thirty-four fifty-one to be codified as chapter four fifteen flood control of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Salem, Missouri. Passed by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, and approved by the mayor this third day of August twenty twenty.
Thank you. We have a motion on bill number thirty-four fifty-one.
Make a motion to approve thirty-four fifty-one.
We have a second?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing and we'll call for the vote Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleiter.
Yes.
Ms. Happel, bill number thirty-four fifty-seven, please.
Would you like this one read in full one time, one time, and captioned second, or captioned both times?
Let's do captioned both times, please.
Bill number thirty-four fifty-seven, an ordinance establishing new rates for electric services provided by the City of Salem, Missouri. Bill number thirty-four fifty-seven, an ordinance establishing new rates for electric services provided by the City of Salem, Missouri, passed by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, and approved by the mayor this third day of August twenty twenty.
And that is for a three percent rate decrease, Ray?
For a three, three percent rate decrease.
Do we have a motion on bill number thirty-four fifty-seven?
I make a motion, we approve bill number thirty-four fifty-seven.
We have a motion, do we have a second? You would like it? Any discussion?
So the recent rate decrease was, you just heard, is establishing a new structure, that is three percent less than the previous. The overall cost is being passed on based on an average look at the billing cycles in the last year. That three percent is per kilowatt hour, and depending on where you follow the rate structure, that may vary, so where your price versus the, person residential versus commercial. If you want that rate structure, Ray, can provide that at the city offices. If you could go back and you know the current rate structure versus where we were, this most comparable year was two thousand twelve, and it changed several times in two thousand twelve. In general, this is a great opportunity, but there's always an opportunity to go down next year, but we don't know, this future is uncertain at this time. Also want to thank everyone for their patience with the current billing challenges, and the Board of Aldermen have taken action to improve that situation rapidly.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing and we'll call for the vote Alderman Hinderleiter.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Alderman Steelman. Alderman James.
Yes.
Ms. Happel, resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty, please.
Resolution number seventeen dash twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a payment agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri and Salem R E School District, whereas the City of Salem, Missouri city desire to enter into a payment agreement with Salem R E School District, Salem R eighty, for a five hundred KVA pad mount transformer for a remodel project. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri as follows, section one, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city a payment agreement between the city and Salem R eighty for sixty monthly payments for reimbursement of a five hundred KVA pad mount transformer for a remodel project. Section two, Salem R eighty agrees to pay one hundred and forty dollars a month for sixty months due to the, due on the twentieth day of each month, following the execution of attachment aid purchase agreement. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval, passed by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, and approved by the mayor this third day of August twenty twenty.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A second, any discussion? Hearing and we'll call for the vote Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleiter.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is under new and miscellaneous business, we have the code of conduct review. Mr. Walden, could you please present that?
This was something that was adopted by a previous board some time back, and actually calls for an annual review in May, and that got by us, and so was asked to bring it to the board for your consideration, if there would be any changes or additions that you would want. If you're not, if you're prepared to do that, we would need to go ahead and get those changes, you know, codified, and then bring back, you know, for a proper, you know, consideration, but wanted, you know, to present this, you know, to you for review as specified in, in ordinance.
It's a pleasure of the board.
I make a motion, we leave it as is, if that needs to even be a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing and we'll call for the vote Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleiter.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
This time, we need a motion to go into closed session for personnel contracts and litigation.
I make a motion, we go to closed session for personal contracts and litigation.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Call for the vote Alderman Hinderleiter.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman James.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you all.